I did that. Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by roll call, see that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Leach and Councilwoman Kukavas who are excused this evening. We'd like to welcome those who are with us tonight in the audience as well as those who may be joining us watching at home on City 56. We'd like to begin this evening with an invocation. We've asked Councilmember Alsop if he'd lead us in a word of prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Mayor. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for letting us join together tonight and do the things that needs to be done for the city of Cholo. We just ask that you continue to bless each one of the members here on the council for the things that they have to do and the decisions we have to make. We just thank you for our community. We thank you for the giving and the sharing that they've been doing for all their life. And we just ask you to continue to bless them and with your grace and your mercy, we just ask that you bless each one of us in your precious name. Amen.
Please join me in your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Alsop and Vice Mayor. First item tonight is Call to the Public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's not on the agenda may do so at this time. See no one moved. I'll close Call to the Public and come back to Special Events. We have a presentation of a semi-annual report, Cholo Chamber of Commerce. Give the time to you. Jimmy?
Mayor, Council, thanks for letting me be here tonight. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good evening. We started out with snow this morning, but it's gone. They say it's coming back.
My-
You guys have in front of you financial reports for the Chamber of Commerce through September of this year. Chamber's looking good. We're doing all right. You'll see right away a balance sheet as of end of September, forty thousand plus in one bank, thirty-five hundred plus in another bank, total of forty-three, five, uh, seven, uh, five, six, seventy-six, excuse me. Total, the rest of the balance sheet looks perfect. But what that will tell you is the back half of the year is usually when we're bringing in less income, and so we'll obviously deplete that sum for the last three months of the year, but we'll end the year on a good note, and we'll put some more money in the bank this year. So we're excited about that. I don't know how much, but it's, it looks good from here. The next sheet that you see is P and L, January through September for the Tourist Information Center. And that looks good to me, even though it doesn't look good to you right off the, right off the spot. What you'll see there is a net income of a negative seventeen hundred dollars. What's not shown, because that's through September, is the final quarter of the year, which will be another payment in from the city of Cholo for the Tourist Information Center, and we will not deplete the remainder of that. So this looks to the, to be the first time that the Chamber, and I won't promise you anything, but it looks favorable that the first time that the Chamber of Commerce and the Tourist Information Center will end the year on a positive note in over nine years. You recall when we first got there, we did some research. When I first got there, we did some research as to what was done with some of the finances, and I agreed with some of the input from the council that probably the bookkeeping wasn't done to what you and I would like. And so we adjusted that around and corrected some of the things and made sure the monies were going where they needed to be going. And so we'll, we'll see a positive number there at the end of the year. I don't know what it's gonna be, but it'll be nice to see finally. So that's that. The next sheet in your pile of sheets is a green one right there. You got it, Chamber Membership. And that just shows an expansion and drops, Membership 2017 over 2018, from January through October is what you see in front of you. In the upper right-hand corner of that top green bar is a small box that says January first number. That's where we started the year at, three hundred and thirty-eight members of the Cholo Chamber of Commerce, and we're at October at three hundred and forty-six. So not stellar, but we're growing and it's still continuing to grow. The bottom two boxes are just showing what the expansion is, who the, who the drops are, and who the expansions are, the additions. So that's that. The final sheet, and I'll just keep moving unless there's a question, please jump in. Hi Laura, how are you? The final sheet is Tourist Information Center numbers for the third quarter, July, August, September, and then totaling that for the year. So that will show you visitors' counts through local, in-state, and out-of-state. That'll give you numbers for our pages, our website pages, and sessions, users, paid views, percent of new sessions, which is a good number. And then our social media numbers are stellar. We've continued to grow our social media program quite a bit, and the numbers are doing really, really good. And then the last line is information and packages and requests. We're continuing to combine those. We used to separate those out, but really what we do with that, just so you know, is it's just a customized package. Whether someone's calling us or writing us, and they say we'd like a package of information because we're gonna visit the area, or because we'd like to relocate an area, we have a conversation with them, and we find out where their interests are, find out what their timeframe is, find out when they're gonna be up and get them a calendar. But we really kinda customize it for them and try to give them a package that is exactly what it is that they're looking for in the area. That's the numbers and complete through this quarter. The Chamber started its, recently started its sixth year of the Leadership White Mountain Program, and with good numbers. Again, a brand-new class is excited to be there, and started out with a kick just October eleventh, just a couple days back, and it's been good. So we'll go seven more months of leadership. Government Day is coming up soon. Mayor, you've always helped us with that in this room, and it's been a good day. And there's a lot of learning that goes on. The program continues to succeed. So.
In your, in your report that you shared with us, maybe not this report, but the one that City Manager shared with us, shows that tourism numbers from out-of-state people has definitely taken a pretty good dive this last quarter. Any ideas of why or anything?
I don't know the reason why. We're tracking that. One of the things that we thought about adding to that is also age, but that's one of the things on our list is when they, when they fill out that sheet as to, we welcome them into the Chamber, we ask them to put a comment, but we ask if they're local, and we let them fill out, let them decide if they're local or if they're in-state and or out-of-state. I mean, obviously they'll know some of that, but local is the only one that's questionable. People don't, you know, is local just Cholo? Is local the White Mountain area? We let them, we let them decide that. But out-of-state is low, and I'm not sure why, but it has been.
Any other questions or comments?
Excuse me, Jimmy. Is there a, a space where they can write down what they would like to see more of or missing in the visit to the-
There's not. There's a comment block, and it does that. I would tell you that, and I review the comments from time to time. Most of them are very positive. You know, they were very helpful. Thanks a lot for all the information, those kind of things. I mentioned a minute ago after Mayor asked a question, one of the things I'm interested in putting on there, I haven't yet, is in, is an age group, maybe brackets, you know? What's the age group of those that are in your party?
Why are you looking at me when you say age group?
Because, because, because we see obviously the number of people that show up at a Tourist Information Center these days are usually seen as citizens, and less and less of a younger crowd. Obviously, we think that's, that they're using their cellphone to get their information. They're, they're going onto Google, or they're getting it from some digital format somewhere to gather their information as to what it is they wanna do, where they wanna go, how they get there. Whereas, most of the seniors are still stopping in and saying, help me with whatever it is. But I wanna get a real-life number on that. I think that'll help us project forward and look ahead into the future as to the direction of a Chamber of Commerce, be it Cholo or wherever.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. Applegate. Appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Next item we have is the Consent Calendar. Is there any items that need to be pulled separately on the Consent Calendar? Not I'll read those items. We have a proclamation of a Community Fast for November eleventh through the seventeenth. We have a proclamation from October twenty-first to the twenty-seventh, Arizona Cities and Towns Week, a consideration of acceptance of a grant from Rural Activation and Innovation Network, consideration of acceptance of additional funds for NASA My Library Grant and Authorization. We have a consideration of the approval of the Declaration of Surplus Property for October 2018 Auction, and the consideration of the award of purchase of mechanic service truck and bed authorization. And we have the minutes of the regular meeting on October second, as well as a special meeting on October second. Look for a motion. A motion by Councilmember Alsop, seconded by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? See that pass five to zero. This time, I'd like to read the proclamations that we had. The first proclamation here is one for the Community Fast. "Whereas, community service has always been a part of America's, as well as Cholo's heritage, and whereas the number of those in need in our area seem to be an always-growing number, and the people of our community have always shown a sincere desire to help those in need, especially during the holiday season. And whereas a number of faith-based and other organizations approached the city of Cholo in 2013 with a plan to help those in need in our community. And whereas the city of Cholo embraced this concept, out of which was born the Community Fast of Compassion for Those in Need. And whereas the city of Cholo and its citizens have discovered that the Community Fast is a very worthwhile cause that has made a huge difference in the lives of many in our community. Now therefore, I, Daryl Seymour, Mayor, on behalf of the Cholo City Council, do hereby proclaim November eleventh to the seventeenth, 2018, as Community Fast of Compassion for Those in Need Week, and urge all citizens of Cholo to come together for the sixth annual Community Fast of Compassion for Those in Need. Join us in setting aside one day during this week to fast, and pray for guidance, grace, and protection for our great city and nation as we address the challenges of our time and concerns of those in need. Donate the cost of one or two meals or more, if possible, from this fast to this worthy cause with donations accepted at Cholo City Hall, National Bank of Arizona, Chase Bank, Washington Federal, and Arizona Central Credit Union. And join us, and join with us in a community celebration on November eighteenth, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the Cholo School District Auditorium dated the sixteenth day of October, 2018." At this time, I'd like to present this. We have some members of the committee here. We have the committee chairman. Steve is with us tonight here, is Steve Williams, and we have Steve Heckathor and Pastor Brown, as well as some other members here, if you guys would like to come up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Way to go.
Brown, thank you.
I'll ask you to take a few minutes if you'd like. Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Way to go.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Manager Mutter, thank you very much for having us. This is the sixth annual Community Fast, if you can believe it. For those that may be watching that aren't familiar with it, the, the concept is this. Pick any day during the week of November eleventh through the seventeenth, ask for one or two meals, take the money you would've spent on those meals or more, and donate them to a common fund. A hundred percent of the monies that are donated go to help local families in need. People can donate at any of the four banks in Cholo. They've been great partners or at City Hall here. That first year that we did the fast in 2013, we thought if we could raise five thousand dollars to help people locally, that would be a success. And our community raised nine thousand dollars. Each year, it's, it's gone up. Over five years, there's been sixty-five thousand dollars that has been donated to the Community Fast, and every penny, every penny has gone to help local families in need. That money's gone through organizations like the VFW, the Senior Center, the Safe House for Battered Women and Children, the schools. Teachers have been able to identify children in need. It's gone to help them. The community's been tremendously generous. One of the highlights is the day following the fast this year will be Sunday, November eighteenth, and we'll join for a community celebration. There are some musical numbers that are presented, and we also hear back from last year's donations, how they were spent. And it's always a highlight to hear how those monies blessed people over the holidays. And so we look forward to having the, the council there with us. We always hear from the mayor, he gives concluding remarks. It's just a highlight of the week and a great way to kick off the holiday season. I, I wanna thank the mayor and the city council. Your support has been so needed and such a vital part of the success of the Community Fast. I'm grateful to the organizations that are in a position to identify people in need and that are so willing to partner in this. I'm grateful for friends of mine, like Pastor Steve Heckathor and Pastor Tom Brown, that are pioneers in this area, that have been so generous and great to work with. And I feel blessed to be a part of it. And so just wanna thank you so much for your support on this.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd like to echo President Williams' comments and remarks. And one of the things I'd like to just inform everybody and those watching is, many people consider this a church event. This is really a community event that churches participate in. And so I would, I would like to invite all the churches in the Cholo area to consider joining us. It's not an ecumenical movement. We are people that have a common desire to help those in our community that are in need. One of, one of the things that is interesting is, the great, the great command is, "Love God with all your heart, mind, soul, and being." But the second is, "Love your neighbors yourself." And really what this is, is we're saying and standing shoulder to shoulder with those in our community, and we're saying, yes, maybe on Sunday, we're in different locations, but the one common core that we have, belief that we have in common, is we all believe in helping those in need. And so I am proud to be able to stand with President Williams and Tom, Pastor Brown, and the other bishops in the LDS Church, and say, "We want to come together and help our community, just as churches, and we invite any organization that wants to join us, any church that wants to join us, and I'm, I'm offering an open invitation to other churches to join us." One of the things that we do as churches is, we'll send missionaries to the tip of Africa, tip of South America, but I think sometimes it's important that we go to the tip of Cholo. And there are needs in our community that are staggering. And when we hear the reports come back of children that go to school without coats, children that go to school without shoes, this is happening in Cholo, in our community. And so as we have seen this thing grow year by year, and it's become, I think, one of the most successful organizations in the community far as helping those in need, I would just like to invite each and every one of you city council members, if you would, consider talking to your, your pastor, your church, wherever you fellowship, and say, "You know, hey, was that, is that something we could be a part of?" Because I'll tell you, this is, the Community Fast celebration that we have at the Cholo High School, I think is one of the greatest meetings in Cholo all year long, where we come together of different faiths, different beliefs, and say, "Hey, you know what? Let's agree to have a common core belief that let's, it's more important to help people than anything that we do, collect together or individually, and what we can do collectively." And so I would encourage you and just challenge you to consider joining us and helping us in this cause. It's a very worthwhile cause. And I do want to thank Mayor Seymour and the City Council of Cholo for allowing this to happen in Cholo. This is unique in cities. This will not happen, and probably will not happen in many other cities in, in Arizona. But far as what is allowed and what the city of Cholo will help sponsor and be a part of, I wanna tell you that I am proud to be a resident of Cholo, where the city of Cholo will stand up and say, "You know what? We will support God, country, city, and community to help those in need." And so I just wanna congratulate Mayor Seymour and the City Council, and thank you for your help and support in this cause. You're helping a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Steve.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next proclamation we have here is Arizona Cities and Towns Week. "Whereas the citizens of the city of Cholo rely on local government to experience a high quality of life in our community, and whereas local governments in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver city services such as police, public works, and emergency services to create safe and viable communities. And whereas the methods of funding these vital city services are not always clearly understood by citizens, and whereas it is one of the responsibilities of city officials to ensure that legislators, media, and citizens understand that local government, through open and frequent communication using various avenues and means, and whereas it is important to work to encourage this connection and inform citizens of the importance of state shared revenues, preserve the excellent delivery of services that our citizens have come to expect in our city. And whereas through education and awareness, citizens, community leaders, and city staff work together to ensure that services provided by the city of Cholo remain exceptional elements of the quality of life of our community." Now therefore, I, Daryl Seymour, Mayor, on behalf of the Cholo City Council, do hereby proclaim October twenty-first through October twenty-seventh, 2018, as Arizona Cities and Towns Week. And in observance of this event, the city of Cholo will host third graders as they tour municipal facilities to introduce the students to the workings of local government, dated the sixteenth day of October. This time, we have a small presentation. We'd like to show our citizens here. Do so much in our community to keep things working. When you turn that faucet, it works. When you call 911, somebody shows up, and all of those other things, that a stoplight turns green and it turns red. And I think sometimes we forget how complex really it is to make all those things happen, but once it's working together, it makes our community what it is. And thank you for citizens' understanding and your cooperation when a road's tore up, or maybe there's a detour here or there, but we appreciate your patience as we continue to grow as a community. Next item we have is our new business, consideration of Resolution Number R2018-25 endorsing consolidation of Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District with the White Mountain Lake Fire District. Steve Savage?
Actually, I'll, I'll make the staff presentation, and Chief Savage is here if the council has any questions of him. Just to give you a little background on, on this issue, on the count, on the agenda tonight, in 2013, seven area fire districts were asked to consider participating in a study to determine the feasibility of merging and consolidating the fire districts. Initially, only fire, three fire districts committed to participating, which resulted in the merger of the Lakeside, Linden, and Cholo Fire Districts in September of 2014 into the Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District. The White Mountain Lake Fire District was one of the original seven, but declined to participate. Because the White Mountain Board lacked a quorum of members, the board was replaced by a county-appointed administrator in 2018. Administrator John Flynn of Policy Logic LLC assumed the roles and responsibilities of the fire board and reported directly to the Navajo County Board of Supervisors. In that capacity, Mr. Flynn established a budget for fiscal year 2019 that illustrated that the White Mountain Lake Fire District could not continue to provide services at the current level because of the lack of sustainable funding. The budget and its shortfall were reported to the Board of Supervisors, and then proceeded to conduct a feasibility study to identify suitable area-fire district partners that could maintain services to the White Mountain Lake community. The study identified Taylor Snowflake Fire Department, Vernon Fire Department, or Fire District, and the Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District as the most suitable, and further determined that Timber Mesa was the most feasible partner for consolidation. In September of 2018, the White Mountain Lake Fire District approved a resolution requesting consolidating with the Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District. In turn, Timber Mesa, the Timber Mesa Board voted to accept the request, and also approved a resolution authorizing staff to conduct a study to determine the financial sustainability and impact of consolidation on both agencies and district residents, and called for a public hearing on the matter for October 22nd, 2018. The consolidation study required by law stated that, quote, "Ongoing operating cost of the White Mountain Lake Fire District will exceed available recurring revenues for each of the fiscal years following the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2019. And the consolidation of the White Mountain Lake Fire District into the Timber Mesa Fire Medical District is feasible and would result in significant savings for the taxpayers of the White Mountain Lake community, while providing such limited savings to the taxpayers of Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District that it can only be described as cost-neutral. There is no negative impact projected for any taxpayer of either district as a result of consolidation," close quote. Included in your packets this week was a, is a complete copy of that feasibility study. Pursuant to the Arizona Vice statutes, before the Timber Mesa Fire Medical District can approve the consolidation, it must receive the endorsement of the Cholo and Pinetop Lakeside Councils if a proposed consolidated district includes property located within the incorporated city or town. The Timber Mesa Fire Medical District has asked that the council consider Resolution Number R2018-25, which would endorse consolidating Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District with the White Mountain Lake Fire District. And staff's available for any questions, and Chief Savage of the Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District's also available, should you have questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Critten did.
Uh, I think, no, I don't think. I know you said it in here, but I'm gonna ask a question anyway, so everybody understands. Is there any potential cost to the city of Cholo taxpayers, or cost to Cholo taxpayers, or Cholo citizens, if we approve this?
And Chief Savage can ask a little bit, answer a little bit more, but as, as was stated in the staff summary, it's at, it'll be cost-neutral for the residents of the Timber Mesa District.
We actually project a, a minor savings, but again, it was so small that I, I didn't feel comfortable identifying that as anything other than cost-neutral. And that, and that is projected over a five-year period each year for those five years.
Good. Great. I don't think it's fair to say there could never be an increase of costs. I mean, if, obviously-
I think as it relates to White Mountain Lake and the consolidation, it might be fair to say that, but to suggest that fire district will never see an increase in cost is, is, your crystal ball is better than mine.
Is there any chance that this would improve the ISO rating at all up there at White Mountain Lake, this merger?
I think it will improve the ISO rating. Timber Mesa has actually been approached by ISO here in the last couple of weeks to, to schedule a regrade. After, we explained that we were in the middle of a consolidation process, they wanted to schedule it after that was done. We did ask them to project what, with White Mountain Lake's current rating and our current rating, what, what they would anticipate, and frankly, what, to simplify it, they anticipate we will bring them to, to our level of ISO versus them having a negative impact on us, if that makes-
So we think that that would enhance their fire service out in that area?
Dramatically.
Will be definitely enhanced.
Yes.
How about the area where, is all of that entire area, even out at Silver, I mean, Silver Lake Estates? Is that part of it or not?
On the map, in the, in the very last page of the feasibility study, you can see Timber Mesa outlined in, in red- outlined in red and, in early, red and white, and then White Mountain Lake directly to the north of that in purple with red hash marks through it. The small square kind of in between the two districts is Silver Lake Estate. That's that one section area, so that's not included, and you cannot add area to a district through the process of consolidation or merger. You can only take the existing districts where they're at and consolidate or merge them.
Do those areas ever, in the future, get developed or not? Or they just remain little islands out there?
The Silver Lake Estates has been identified for Timber Mesa as a target for annexation at some point. It's of the priorities, it's probably the lowest priority. We want to finish the Bison, Bison Ranch annexation, which if you'll recall, was started by Cholo Fire prior to merger, and then had to be abandoned as part of that merger process for the same reason I just stated, because you can't add any area through the process of merger or consolidation. Then we have some other areas down in the southern area around Lakeside that we would like to annex, and then Silver Lake Estates is one of those that we would target for annexation as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Ossoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I've got a question for you. The question we always get hit about is, there's two things that's hitting our tax bill that's really high. One is the fire district, second is the college.
Correct.
Can you, with bringing White Mountain Lake Fire Department into our Timber Mesa, you know, even the wording here says that White Mountain Lake wasn't going to be sustainable for the budgets, whatever they had. I don't know what their budget was, I don't know what per hundred thousand it was, but, you know, I know ours has gone up, and it's, we've been sustained on that, but the main question everybody's asking is how much is it gonna go up? We know that you cannot tell us, like, right today that it's gonna go up or it's gonna go down, but they're just tired of seeing really high on their tax bill for the fire district and for the school. Is there any way that you can kind of look in your crystal ball and kind of, you know, let the residents know that, yeah, we're making our fire district bigger, better, we're bringing more people, and hopefully it should lower our taxes, but yet you still have to have the manpower and the equipment and the tools and everything else to do that over there, too?
Councilman Ossoff, if I can, if I can give kind of a long answer to that question, I would reflect on the previous five years. And when Lakeside, Cholo, and Linden Fire Districts merged, we took an organization that was spending, or three organizations that were collectively spending about $10.3 million a year, and we immediately cut it to about 8.4. We saved $1.9 million the first year. And we have, and I don't, I don't want to engage in kind of Washington numbers, if you will, but we have maintained that $2 million gap, and actually grown that $2 million gap between what was projected for those three previous districts and what Timber Mesa is spending. So in essence, we've saved the taxpayers of the area $2 million a year as a result of that merger. I think there is efficiencies in, I don't know if size is the right word, but certainly in collective efforts. Moving forward, I think those efficiencies would continue to be gained through regional efforts like this consolidation here, although this has a much less significant impact on the taxpayers. We're not gonna see another $2 million savings as a result of this consolidation.
Yeah, I just...
Does that help answer the question?
Yeah, you know, and I think it's good for the public to know that. I mean, we can answer the questions, but it has really nothing to do with the city because you guys are your own tax base, your own everything else. But just to get the word out so they understand why the taxes are so, where they're at compared where they should be, or what people think they should be, and all the training and equipment and the stuff to keep you guys up to the part that you need to do to protect our, not only our homes, but all the, everything in the cities of Pintop Lake, or Lakeside and Cholo and White Mountain Lake and all that stuff. So we understand that, but I think it's just good for the people to understand where that tax base is and what's going on with it, and what you're doing with it, instead of just looking at a tax bill and going, dang, it went up another 150 bucks. You know, it's something that I think will be liable for them.
And we can do that, and I certainly would encourage those folks to come, come visit with us and look at, look at the budget, and look at the tax rate history and those kind of things, and we'll share all that information. You asked me to look into the crystal ball a little bit, and then as we move forward, as we, as we project our revenues and expenses over the next several years, we do see the tax rate this year leveled off, and we start to see it trickle back down the other way. We're still, like many folks out there, recovering from a prolonged recession, but at this point, we have leveled off, and we do see the, foresee the tax rate beginning to decline over the next couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Not all up for a motion? Councilmember Crittenen.
I move to adopt resolution number R2018-25 endorsing the consolidation of the Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District with the White Mountain Lake Fire District.
I think we have a motion. We have a second by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? All for the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass five to zero. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. City manager.
Just one quick question, in case somebody's listening to this and wants to attend that public hearing you have on October 22nd, what's the location and time?
That's at the Timber Mesa Administration Facility, and it's at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have is a consideration of ordinance number 2018-03 authorizing the sale of real property pursuant to ARS statute 9-402 and approving the agreement for the sale of real property. City manager and city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm gonna take this and do the staff summary, but before I start, I'd just like to introduce RJ Owens from Pet Allies is here, and also we have Brad Provost in the back and Mutter, the city manager. So if you have questions, I might defer to some of these people, because I don't know if I know all the answers, but I'll give the staff summary and we'll go from there. On February 20th, 2018, the council approved the purchase of property that was located at 1321 North 16th Street. This is also known as Assessor's Parcel 21049120. The purchase price was $280,000. That was from 1321 SL LLC. This was Tim and Dorothy Cox. City staff had been looking for property to relocate the city's animal shelter, currently being operated by Pet Allies, Inc., a more accessible site for the public. Move would also allow the Public Works Department to use the existing property to expand its facility. The city discussed the possible relocation with RJ Owens of Pet Allies, who indicated that the organization would now be interested in purchasing the property from the city to relocate and continue to provide animal shelter services to the city. She indicated she had received an inheritance from her sister and could use the money towards expanding the animal shelter at the site. She also indicated it'd be much easier for her to apply for grants if, from private donors if she owned the facility. The staff explained to Mrs. Owens that the city would need to go through the bidding process in order to sell the property. The bidding process required the city to follow the provisions of ARS 9-402, which states an invitation to bid must be published in a local newspaper, and an intent to sell the property must be posted in three public places in the city. The staff published the invitation to bid on September 21st and 25th with a bid deadline of October 6th. The only bid received was from Mrs. Owens of Pet Allies. Allies, Inc. has offered to pay $282,000 to purchase the property and to continue providing animal shelter services to the city. The purchase price for the property will be deducted from the annual fee that the city currently pays the Pet Allies for operating the shelter, and it's attached on the schedule to the deed of trust. I think it's been included in your packets. A promise or a note and option to purchase the property, if the property ceases to be used as an animal shelter, are also part of the agreement. Mrs. Owens indicating her bid that she'll make substantial improvements to the property, including building additions, animal adoptions, with separate kennels for cats and dogs. And I believe, I'm not sure if it's showing up there, but there's a diagram of what she proposes to do. So the ordinance number 2018-03 authorizes the mayor to execute the necessary documents to sell the city-owned property, and staff recommends that the council approve the attached agreement for the sale of real property to Pet Allies, Inc. And I'm available, as well as city manager, RJ, Brad Provost, Chief Shelley, anybody that wants to answer questions about the operation. And I think if you look at those, I'll just take you real quick. I think that the, on the northwest corner is the existing building, and then you can see, the building will extend out to the south and then out to the east. That's the building addition. And it shows you the proposed plan, if you can see.
One of the things that we talked a little bit about, and I don't see it necessarily here on this design, but we kind of, with that property, we were kind of in hopes it would allow maybe an area for people to interact more with the animals, that they were possibly going to adopt out in the grounds or anything there. You want to touch base on that, or is that, you know, I don't, I'm not familiar with your operation.
That's okay. So there are rooms designed there for people to come in and actually meet an animal and interact with the animal, bring their own pet in, see whether they get along together before they adopt. But I don't, we were kind of hoping the city might develop the land next to us there and make that a dog park, and then we could have a really nice little area there. So we're kind of hoping maybe we could get some help that way. So I haven't really planned for anything right in that area there. It's just gonna be a really beautiful shelter, so there's...
With your concept here, what is your, you know, idea of these future buildings? How soon or what timeframe are you thinking that you would like to ultimately expand to that?
I, I'm, I've already got the architect drawing it up, and I'm ready to go. As soon as everything is approved, we're ready to build the dog kennel part and the frame around the cat and the intake area. So I would think that they would be done in, I'm hoping eight months, but I may be I want to push the construction on that part. We really want those dog kennels done so we can have a, you know, a beautiful place, and Bullock Works really needs the space we're in. So we're anxious to get that done, so right away.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Well, you know, I see you got a number of different phases, and I think it'll probably piggyback with the mayor, but with these phases, are you looking at having it done in two years, one, three years, one year? What are you...
Well, phase one would be the first year, phase two, I'm hoping we'll tag on to the first year, because that's like finishing the intake area. We'd like to have intake of strays come in through a separate doorway than the people that are coming in to adopt. And I'm hoping that will start at least the first year, and then the other phases probably would be three years, four years. Those are in the original building, and they're for non-essential, just things that Pet Allies wants to do to perfect its own operation. So, but the dog and the cat area, we want that done right away, as fast as they can get it done.
You're looking at at least four to five years?
For everything that's on there, yeah. And that's all based on fundraising.
Right.
Any other comments or questions? Do you have any other comments you'd like to share with us?
No, we're just really, really excited about the possibility to do this with the city, and we really appreciate the chance to do it. I think it'd be a great facility that will be wonderful for everybody.
Appreciate your interest in, in taking this on and your ambition with that. It's a great asset to our community to have.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this time I'll look for a motion.
Mayor, sorry, can I interject here? Sorry, I put in front of you a paper that just shows a change that we made in the agreement for sale. If you'll recall, when we sold the property, or, sorry, when we bought the property from Tins Lampscape Creations, we gave them till the end of October to continue to rent the property, and then we could buy them out earlier from the property in November, December. End of October to, sorry, to rent it.
Right.
And then they have December, November, December, we could buy them out earlier to the property. So we've been in contact with them, we're still trying to get a date, and RJ knows that we're still, you know, it could be sometime middle of November, end of November, but that's what that paragraph is for, is to make that correction in the agreement.
We need to note that, or just in our discussion, that's...
Yeah, maybe just in the, in the motion to say that agreement for sale is correct.
Yeah, all right. This time I'll ask the city clerk to read ordinance number 2018-03 by title only, since all council members have a copy.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance to the mayor and council of the city of Cholo, Arizona, authorizing the sale of real property pursuant to Arizona revised statute, section 9402.
Thank you. Look for a motion. I'll make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance number 2018-03 with the modified attached list that we have here of conditions, and further move to approve the agreement for sale of real property to Pet Allies, Inc., and authorize the mayor to sign all documents necessary to transfer the property to Pet Allies, Inc. A motion, we have a second. Is there any other discussion? All for the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass five to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is a summary of current events. I'd like the city council members to share any current events that they may have. Councilmember Ossoff.
Thank you, Mayor. They attended the Goodwill Grand Opening Friday, last Friday, and unbelievable how many people were ready to walk into that building, it was unbelievable. And then I went by it the next day and the next day, and it just, busy, busy, busy. So I think it's gonna be a great asset to city of Cholo. There's just a lot of people and a lot of different things. Looks like it's a well-run business, a lot of, lot of good staff and employees, I think they said 25 to 35 people, full-time. So it's a great thing for the city of Cholo. So I'm hoping everybody enjoys it, and I'm hoping that they are prospering really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Kelly.
Ditto. The crowd was just wrapped completely around the building, ready to come in when they opened their doors.
Great. Any other council member? I just want to share, it was, it was a great grand opening. We appreciate staff for their efforts of working with the contractors. They praised Cholo and the opportunity of locating here. It's funny, before they opened, they're saying we should have put a builder, a bigger building in, so we've heard that numerous times, so. We also had the ribbon cutting of the pickleball courts, and we had our first tournament up there recently, and then we had the opportunity of having the ribbon cutting on our jail, and appreciate the work that went in on locating our jail down here on, I'll call it City Hall Corner, and so it's just kind of a neat building, and if you haven't already taken the time to look at it, stop by and, and look at that old jail. It's kind of a neat icon building of our community. I just want to share, this evening, we had an opportunity prior to a meeting here of being able to touch and feel a NASA suit that was, actually went to the moon, and many of us was able to pick up some rocks that have been to the moon, so I can say I have now touched the moon, so, in a much, much safer environment perhaps there. Councilmember Kelly.
I just wanted to add that if anybody feels the need, or has the need to be in the Cholo jail, what you want to do is hope the new one is not too full, and they have to use this other one, because I think the newer one would be far more comfortable.
Great. I just want to let the public know that they're invited to celebrate the International Observe the Moon Night this Saturday, October 20th, from 6:15 to 8:30 PM at the Cholo Public Library here at 181 North 9th Street, featuring a NASA exhibit of moon rocks, meteorites, and a spacesuit worn by an astronaut who walked on the moon. The library will also have activities for all age groups, including games, crafts, and projects, and telescopes to view the moon. We'll also have refreshments and giveaway from the Flagstaff Lowell Observatory. I want to thank our library directors and people there, because the Cholo Library is the only library in Arizona chosen as a NASA at my library partner, and receiving this NASA exhibit is a very unique opportunity. So get out again October 20th from 6:15 to 8:30 PM here at the library. At the time, the city manager for his report.
A couple of things to report. The Cholo City Hall has been designated as an early voting center for all Navajo County voters for the November 6th general election. The voting center is open this week only through Friday, October 19th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Voters will need to present a valid Arizona driver's license, and you can do the early voting at that location. Voters can also drop off their early ballots if they want to, and you can drop it off at the city hall there at that voting location, or other, the ballot box north of the county complex, or you can mail those in to the Navajo County.
or other, the ballot box north of the county complex, or you can mail those in to the Navajo County. There are a number of planned Halloween activities this week, or the next couple of weeks, including a free movie at the park this Friday, October 19th, showing A Quiet Place, beginning at 7:00 PM at Pandrosa Film. That'll be dependent on the weather between now and Friday evening. Two events next Thursday, October 25th, at Cholo City Park, beginning with Trick or Treat Trail for boys and girls ages 10 and younger at 6:00 PM, followed by the Terror Trail for youth 11 to 17 at 7:00 o'clock. The tickets for either event can be pre-purchased. They're $3 each for the first event and $5, or $3 each pre-purchased and $5 at the event. More information on those Parks and Rec activities, you can reach them at 532-4140. A family-friendly book cart carnival will be held on Friday, October 26th, from 6:15 PM to 8:00 PM at the library with carnival games geared for ages 10 and younger. There will be an annual Spooktacular Festival sponsored by Main Street. Cholo Main Street will be Saturday, October 27th, from noon to 8:00 PM in downtown Cholo on Cooley and 9th Streets. The Spooktacular features trunk-or-treat contests, entertainment, games, and vendors. And finally, Monster Madness for ages 0 to 12 on Friday, November 2nd, at 6:00 PM at the City Campus Gymnasium with craft activities and a showing of Disney's Monsters, Inc. So there's a lot of activities happening over the next couple of weeks. And if you have any, need more information, just contact City Hall.
Appreciate it. Any other comments, Mayor? Yeah, just to remind everybody, we had a great, you know, understanding of the Community Fast tonight. We appreciate those people and I just encourage council members to come to that celebration on November the 18th and get involved with this, the week of the fast. Scheduling of meetings, we just remind you that we have on October 30th at the Darren Reed Community Center Room. That's where we'll be having our retreat this year. And that is also open to the public. If anybody wants to come and be bored all day, you're welcome to show up. And, you know, as well as reporting, we invite you as well. So it's just a great opportunity where we have an opportunity to discuss some of our ideas and plans for the coming year. And so it's just a well-thought-out day and we appreciate staff taking the time to schedule as much as we can, make it that day possible. Seeing no other meetings, we need to go into executive session. The items on executive session is a discussion and consultation for legal advice with attorneys concerned the purchase or sale of real estate property, AP Number 210-18-015A and AP Number 210-49120, and discussion of records exempt by law from the public.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilmember Alsop, second by Vice Mayor, and all those in favor. At this time, we'll move into executive session and thank you for watching with us this evening. Appreciate it.